Check us out to hear the latest on life in the volunteer state. Ivanka and her guests discuss everything from life, love, and business with a Tennessee flair.
It's a Tennessee thing!
Always relatable, always relevant, and always a good time. This is Talkin' Tennessee and now your host, Ivanka.
This episode is brought to you by Turning Knox Rental, your go-to for event rental services. We have selfie machines, 360 photo machines, and food servicing machines that you can rent out to give your parties the best experience possible. Get the TKR experience with Turning Knox Rental. You can find us at www dot turningknoxrental dot com.
Welcome back to Talkin' Tennessee with Ivanka. I am your host and I am here with Knox County Commissioner Schoolmaker. John Schoolmaker is in that building, everybody. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here.
Well, I wanted to bring John on here because John, for one, let me say, from afar, I've always admired you. I've always saw things that, you know, that you were involved in. Just because he's my neighbor, let me just say this, just because he's my neighbor, I still watched him from afar just to know, you know, who my commissioner is. And I've just seen you do so much for Knox County. So, thank you for, you know, coming on, being open, and just being willing to come talk about Knox County.
Oh, it's a pleasure to be here. And I feel honored since there's been so many superstars on your channel here.
Yes.
Prior to me, so I feel...
You're one of our superstars because you helped run Knox County to be a thriving city. And so, let me say this to you. Who is John Schoolmaker?
Well, I think the best way to describe it, just, I'm a regular guy. And I've just been fortunate to be in the right place at the right time. And I've always enjoyed community service and had an opportunity to become a county commissioner. And I really enjoyed that.
Okay, so what, what brought you to Knoxville, Tennessee? You're, you're from Tampa?
Yes, my wife and I are from Tampa. And we grew up, I grew up in central Florida and she grew up on the east coast of Florida. And so, after we got married, we moved to Tampa for work. And so, it was actually a job transfer. I was involved with the furniture industry. And so, I had an opportunity to come to Knoxville so I could be close to the furniture manufacturing plant, which was over in Bean Station, which is a thriving metropolis.
Yeah.
I'm telling you why.
Yes.
But it was great because that gave us the opportunity to see what really what East Tennessee was like and about how wonderful the people are and of course, the scenery. And because I was having to travel, I needed to be close to the Knoxville Airport. So, instead of locating in Bean Station for residents, I moved, we moved to Knoxville.
Okay, so your wife is named Heather.
Heather, yes.
And how many children do you have?
We have two, a daughter Laura and a son Justin. And Heather and I have been married for forty-four years.
Forty-four years. Oh, wow. I bet you have some great stories, forty-four years, and great lessons at the same time.
Yes.
Yes. So, you moved from Tampa, transferred, moved to Knoxville. I bet you it was a culture shock because it seems like Tampa and Knoxville would not be the same.
Yeah, you know Tampa's obviously a pretty big city.
Yes.
And, but Knoxville is a big city, but with small-town values, which is great. And, you know, you could, you could walk into the grocery store, people would say hello to you. You can go to the Ace Hardware. Everybody is just, they're like family.
Yes.
And you don't really see that in very many areas of the country.
That's true.
And so, I think that's what's, what's unique about East Tennessee and Knox County is we're just friendly.
And you don't have to know each other. We will help each other when someone's in need. East Tennessee will band together. It doesn't matter what walk of life you come from. East Tennessee is family. It truly is. Go Vols! But that's the part, I grew up in Harriman, Tennessee, and it's thirty minutes away from here. And my mom and dad got a divorce when I was seventeen years old and I moved here. And it was, to me, was the opposite. Because you came from a city to the country and I came from the country to the city, a bigger city. But Knoxville really has so much to offer. It's a family-based city. It's affordable city. Now, things have went up. I will say that, things have went up. But even at these prices, you can live in Knox County comfortably and raise a family. You know, the crime rate, if you look at the crime rate over the country, it's still low in Knox County. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think that that's a big plus. You know, when you can raise a family, not worry as much as some of the bigger cities. I think that's a win-win. And then the parks that we have, we have so many beautiful parks. I was just home, like I said, I'm from Harriman and they were honoring my grandfather because he has a park named after him, John, in Harriman. And I just looked around and saw the different things that they're doing at my grandfather's park. And I looked at the parks up here and I'm like, these Tennessee parks are just beautiful and they have their own character. And so, that's one of the things that you can say, you know, your kids get to see, you know, grow up. Where did your kids go to school?
They went to the, all to the Farragut Schools, so to speak. Which, but my, both my son and daughter started at AL Lots Elementary. In fact, my daughter was the first class at AL Lots when it was built.
Really?
And then they went to West Valley Middle School when that was new.
Yes.
Brand-new and so, and then both...
Those are two great schools.
Oh, absolutely.
My kids went through those two schools, yes.
You had a former principal on your show too long ago in West Valley.
Yes, Renee Kelly, yes.
Absolutely, she's phenomenal.
She is.
And then they went to Farragut High School and just got a great education.
Great education.
My wife and I have always believed in public education because we both went through that growing up. And Farragut, just in a great community with the parents and the volunteerism that goes on there. It's, it's, it's great. And then, my son was fortunate enough to be able to play Farragut football.
Okay.
So, for four years, Heather and I served on the Football Booster Club for Farragut High School.
I bet you that was a great experience.
Yeah, and we were there when the new stadium went in.
Really?
We, we saw the old rickety football stadium that was like wondering if it was gonna fall in on Friday night and to the new one, so.
So, what do you think that sets Knoxville apart from other cities of your opinion?
Well, I think that, again, it goes back to what you talked about, the family values and how, how people are just, they're, they're, they'll say hello to you, you know? If you're out walking your dog, whatever, people will stop and wave at you or say hello.
Yes.
You know, if you're on not some of the major roads, but if you have a flat tire, people would stop and offer you your, you know, hey, do you have a cellphone? Do you need some help? So, I think it's that, that feeling of community that we have that some areas don't. And it's interesting because the first neighborhood we went to, it actually was people from all different areas. And we were all kind of in the same boat and all starting young families. But to this day, we still have friends that lived in that original neighborhood.
And see, that's amazing. Because you've been in our subdivision since nineteen...
Ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one. And I will say that Tampa is a great subdivision. I moved here in two thousand and one. So many of the neighbors have helped me along the way of being a mom, a young mom, a young wife, just nurturing me in a way that, I lost my mom and dad in my thirties, John. And so, when you don't have parents, you know, it, it's hard. It's totally hard. And I can honestly say that the neighbors in my subdivision is the neighbors that you want to have. You want those neighbors that they're gonna love on you, you can cry when you cry, they're gonna wipe your tears and the picnic, our picnic is everything in our subdivision. And so, when he says "community," I agree. East Tennessee is a big community. You know, we have, you know, the volunteers, you know, in Knoxville. But I have to say about the volunteers is that it's not just at the stadium. We have so many volunteers in community. We have so many people that will lend a helping hand, help the organizations, help the nonprofits, and just help their neighbor. I had a guest on a couple of months ago named Tammy White from Leadership Knoxville. And one thing she said, John, she goes, she said, "We need to know our neighbors." And I said, "What do you mean?" Because I know my neighbors, you know? So, to me, I'm like, "What do you mean?" And she said, "There's a lot of people that, you know, privacy, yes, I understand. Everybody wants some form of privacy, but you do have to have someone that you can lean on." And she said, "Knowing your neighbor will help you through life." And I agree with that. And I think in East Tennessee, knowing your neighbor is a win. Do you agree with that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So, tell me this, what made you want to be a commissioner?
Well, I kinda, it's kinda funny when you mentioned the neighborhood associations and things. And I started out, I had a neighbor that convinced me that I need to be on the Board of Directors of the Tampa Homeowners Association. And he said, "It won't take much time." And she, but one of the requirements is...
That's what they said, was.
Yeah, oh, yes. And he said, "You're gonna be the community action guy." And you have to go to this one meeting a month. And it's for the West Knox County Homeowners Association.
Okay.
So, I said, "Okay, I can do that because it's a Tuesday. It's easy." And I went, "All right." So, I started going to this meeting and within six months, I was elected the Vice President of the organization. And I really didn't, I was just kinda getting my feet wet. And then, six months later, the president bails out and they're like, "You're the new president." So, for twelve years...
And you're like, "Why?"
Yeah. So, for twelve years, I was the president. And one of the responsibilities was, on particularly zoning issues, you had to go down to the Knox County Commission or to the, at that time was called the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Okay.
Or to Knox County's Board of Zoning Appeals. So, for twelve years, I would go pretty much almost every month down to these meetings, either to listen to them or to stand before them and plead my case about why...
So, let's go back, wait, hold on one second. Let's pump the brakes. You had never done this before?
No, no. In fact, it was, it was hilarious because my opinion of county government was a citizen cannot make a difference.
Okay.
And I was proven wrong. First time I went down to county commission, and I wish I could remember what the actual issue was, but I went to the podium and at that time, there was nineteen members of county commission. And they're all staring at you. And I said, said my little spiel about why this shouldn't be, da-da-da-da. And then I sat down, I go, "Well, why did I even bother coming downtown? This is the most, this is ridiculous. It's the dumbest thing I've ever done." And all of a sudden, then they vote and I'm like, "Does that mean I won?" And I, one of the attorneys that's been there for a hundred years, he came by and he said, "Nice job, son." And I was like, "What are you talking about?" One person can make a difference. So, from that on, that kinda spurred me to continue to go and, and speak on behalf of the Homeowners Association. You'd win some, but you'd lose some. But some of the ones that you won, you were like, "Wow, if I hadn't showed up, it wouldn't have worked." And I think that's what we're missing today at county commission. We don't have the public show up to our meetings to kinda give us that insight. You know, we're looking at it from thirty thousand feet on a particular issue.
Yes.
But if we have that boots-on-the-ground neighbor that comes and says, "Hey, here's the deal, guys," I think that would be, it would really help us in our jobs. Because I cover fifty-five thousand people. I can't know everything about the, my district.
Listeners, did you hear that? He covers fifty-five thousand people. He started, didn't, he really didn't know how to do the job. But he was willing to go and learn how the process works. And if there's anything that I want this podcast to do is tell everybody, you can make a difference. Don't let anybody tell you that, "Oh, they're not gonna listen to you" or "You can't make a difference." Because here's a, I'm bringing a person to you that's telling you he's, he had never been in those positions, those talks. He had to go listen and learn how the process works. And so, if anything we can teach in this podcast is go listen, go show up. Don't listen to people telling you not to go, that you're, you know, your voice will not be heard. Because here's a person I'm bringing to you that basically was heard. Now, keep going, John.
Well, so then, after twelve years with the West Knox County Homeowners, the Knox County Courts ruled that county commissioners at the time could not serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
And this was, so then, what they had to do is county commission had to pick an individual from each district now to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And this is the, a citizen-driven board now that basically rules if a new home wants to go in, but they want to build the home closer to the setback requirements and they can ask for a variance. Or if they have a swimming pool that's gonna be closer to the, the rear setback of the property and they can request a variance. So, it was funny, at the time, we had three county commissioners that covers the same district that I cover today.
Okay.
And each one of those three commissioners came to me and they said, "John, you're the only guy that knows anything about zoning issues in the fifth district or southwest Knox County. We want you to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. The only requirement is you can't serve as a board member of the West Knox County Homeowners." So, I did. So, I did that for six years and on the BZA. And I served with Carson Daly, who's the county commissioner in South Knoxville.
Yes.
And then, I was extremely fortunate because Dr. Richard Briggs, who was our county commissioner, he was elected to the state senate. So, he had to vacate his commission post. So, in January of two thousand and fifteen, the county commission elected me over eight other nominees to serve as the county commissioner. And then, I've gone through two election cycles and of course, now I'm term limited.
Yes, so two thousand and fifteen, you started into the new position that you have now.
Yes.
And so, you became a commissioner. Let's go back to, to running for commission, the commissioner seat. Did you ever have days that you felt like, "What am I doing?"
Oh, I think that happens very often, yes, yeah.
What was the thing that made you not give up? If you could pick one thing, there was probably many. But what, what's one thing that you could say, you know, "I kept fighting to get that position for this"?
Well, I think because I had known so much about the policies and the procedures and the people in Knox County, all the, all the folks that are in all the departments, all the senior staff, the mayors, because I've served under two mayors now for the county. And so, it was like, I have all this knowledge, I need to continue to put it to good use. And so, that's what kinda kept me going. And I had a lot of people that said, "Hey, John, you're doing a great job. Just keep going. We appreciate you being there," which was nice to hear.
Exactly. Because when you're giving a good fight for whatever you believe in, you know, you're gonna have good and bad days. And those bad days, you need someone to say, "Keep going." You know, "You're doing a great job," that type thing. And going through two mayor, working for two mayors, I mean, I know it was probably totally like two different spectrums, you know, working for two different people. And I always look at positions like that. I'm like, "Okay, what makes the person just keep going?" You know, on those days that they don't feel like worthy of that position or feel like it's worth it.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I was very fortunate to have a great family, great wife and two kids, two wonderful kids. Because they have to support you. Because if you're gonna be out at a meeting at, at, you know, till nine o'clock at night with some community group, who's gonna make sure that the dog gets fed or is taken out for his little short walk? And so, I, I think anybody who's in political office has to have a great family to be able to support them.
A very supportive family.
It's just, it's, it is tough.
And being in the public eye, it, it's hard, you know, everybody's not called for it. It's, it's, everybody is not called to be in the public eye, you know? And that doesn't mean that you're less than. It's just, everybody's not called for that. And you know, and I do agree with, you know, having a spouse. I tell people all the time with David, you know, David is my biggest cheerleader. David is the person that the days that I'm doubting myself like, you know, "Why am I doing this?" You know, "This is not working. It's not working the way I want it to be." And he's the one that's telling me, "Yovanka, you will figure it out. You'll get it done." You know, that type thing. And then, when you, when you were in the public eye and the scrutiny comes, you gotta have that spouse that says, "You know what? I don't care what anybody says. You're awesome." You gotta have that person, I'd say this, and this is from the Bible, is you have to be glue-yoked. You have to be able to evolve together and you have to be able to celebrate together. I think that's the biggest thing. And of what I see of Heather, she celebrates and y'all really and truly are in sync of what I see. Because I always see you and her, you know, she'll maybe say something or you're saying something and it's like y'all finish, you know? Whatever, whatever, so you finish your spouse's thought or your, whatever they're talking about. So, tell me this, what could you say of your background prepared you for commission? Is there anything that you could say from your childhood, from growing up in Tampa? Is there anything that prepared you for that seat? Or was it just trial and error?
I guess it was more trial and error. I mean, you know, growing up, we, we were just, you know, the same middle-class family as, as pretty much everybody was. And we weren't politically active, you know? You know, my parents instilled in us to vote, that that was a very important thing, which I really believe everyone should, should take the time to vote.
And not just, let me say this, not just vote for who's gonna be president.
Yes.
You gotta vote for all election, the local elections and, and know that your vote counts and know that you can't complain about something if you didn't come out to vote and be a part of something. I believe in that. I hardly, I teach my kids that way. You gotta vote, you know? So, tell me this, what does the commission do? What's Knox County Commission do?
Commission is the legislative body for Knox County. And I'm glad you said that because I wanted to show you this.
Please.
This is the budget for Knox County.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
This is what we are responsible. The eleven county commissioners are responsible for the finances of Knox County.
Everybody, this is a big budget.
So, you go, you go, "Okay, well, so what does that mean?" Well, this year's budget
Okay.
is one billion dollars. One billion dollars.
Did y'all hear that? One billion?
One billion dollars.
For Knox County?
For Knox County. And to put that in perspective, when I first came on commission in January of two thousand and fifteen, our budget was seven hundred and twenty-five million.
Okay.
So, it's drastically grown.
Yes.
Now, where's all the money go? What, why do we, what do we spend it on?
Please tell us.
The number-one expense for the county is to educate our public school children.
Okay.
So, we spend about sixty-five percent of that money on our kids. One of the other concerns about the budget, because I'm physically conservative, is our debt load.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's interesting that we have about seven hundred million dollars worth of debt.
Okay.
Fifty percent of that is the schools portion because you look around how many new elementary schools we've been building, how many new middle schools. And we are fortunate that we do, you know, have a great debt rating. We're a triple, excuse me, a double-A plus, which not many counties in Tennessee can say that. We have an outstanding finance department in Knox County and they've done a great job of monitoring this. Now, the downside is with any debt, you gotta pay debt, right?
Correct.
So, we currently pay about eighty, eighty million dollars a year to satisfy our debt. And that, it's, it's one of those that, you know, you wish you didn't have any debt. But it's, it's just part of it. And we, we really do a good job of monitoring that. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a good bond rating. You know, if you think about individuals who are putting things on credit cards.
Yes.
You know, and if you just said it was, now, credit card rates are in excess of twenty-five percent. You know, if you don't pay it off every month. Well, if seven hundred million dollars, you know, if we didn't have that under-bonded debt, we'd be paying a hundred and seventy-five million dollars to do it, so.
Most definitely. I'll tell you one of the biggest things that shocked me in the past few years. You know, property values have went up tremendously from two thousand and nineteen to now. And everybody were so excited, John. They were so excited. "Oh, my gosh, my house is worth X amount of dollars. I've got all this equity. I can sell. I can do all these different things." But then, people's like, when they get their tax bill, they're like, "Why is my taxes so high?" You would not believe how many conversations I've had to have with clients and say, "Okay, my grandfather taught me debt and asset, okay? He said, 'There's assets and then you have your liabilities, okay?' And he said, 'And you always gotta keep it that way. You gotta know the difference.'" Well, yes, your house is an asset and you want your property values to go up. But you have to understand that with your property values going up, your taxes are gonna go up. Can you explain to the listeners, how does that work? Why, I mean, I know why we're in shock of, well, I'm not in shock because I'm in the business, but to my listeners, why property values went up?
Well, the property assessor for Knox County, every four years, is charged with going by and reappraising your house to see what it actually should be appraised for. And of course, like you said, everybody's went up. And we have a lot of people coming in from outside of Tennessee, which where they sold their homes for a lot of money, were able to come here and purchase more than they probably would have been able to purchase in their home state. And that's raised the, the, the level of the, the housing prices. So, the tax rate is actually set every four years. So, under the old appraisal, our tax rate per thousand was two dollars and twelve cents.
Okay.
Our tax rate now has been reduced to a dollar fifty-five. Now, the problem there is, is when your, your house goes up in value, you're still taxed at a residential price. So, so let's just say your house is worth three hundred thousand dollars, okay? You're only paying taxes on twenty-five percent of the value of your house. So, you're only paying on seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Now, when the tax rate goes down, you're paying on that rate, okay? Now, so if you're about seventy-five thousand dollars in property taxes, about eleven hundred and fifty dollars a year. And on October first of every year, the trustee's office sends your tax bill out.
Yes.
And you have until the last day in November of the next year to be, excuse me, of February, excuse me, to pay for it. But Tennessee has a convoluted way of doing property taxes and we could probably spend the next three days sitting here and explaining that out. But it's a revenue-neutral process. So, in other words, the number of homes that were on the list, basically four years ago, that tax rate has to be level. So, where the county can increase tax revenue is anything off of a new commercial building, additions onto homes, which would increase the value.
Correct.
Or new construction of residential homes, as you know. So, and, and property tax is what runs Knox County. It's not sales tax because we have very few of the cash registers in Knox County.
Okay.
The city has most of them and of course, then the town of Farragut has the balance in my district.
Is driven by the property taxes.
Property tax, yes. And so, you know, you could say, "Well, if your house went from, let's say, we're talking about that three hundred thousand dollar range to four hundred thousand, you know? And, and would you say, 'Well, now, my property taxes now are at the four hundred thousand range, would you go back and sell it at three hundred thousand?'" I don't think so. I don't think so. You'd wanna sell your house at the, at the higher limit, the four hundred thousand.
Correct. And that's what I try to tell people. I'm like, okay, so if you go to sell your house, are you gonna wanna stay at the lower amount? Are you gonna want to, you know, get your true investment out of it? They're like, well, I didn't think about it that way. And I said, you have to think about it that way, that you want. Everything that you can get out of your investment. So it's going to cost you money, you know, property taxes are gonna go up.
And I was just gonna say that I ran into a couple from Connecticut recently and they were just thrilled to be in Knox County. And one of the reasons, not only because of our beauty and the people, because of our tax situation. They had come from a middle income home in Connecticut. And they told me that they were billed for their property tax quarterly. Quarterly. And it was just under.
We would go in convulsions. Got charged quarterly, I'm telling you, we would go in convulsions.
Well, and that bill quarterly was just under four thousand dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
So on a year, four quarters, they were paying almost sixteen thousand dollars for property tax. Now, if we had people, if we said that to our, our folks here in Knox County, they would go nuts.
All the hospitals would be full.
They're now paying less than two thousand dollars, so they feel like they got a raise to come to Tennessee, to Knox County.
I've had people tell me the same thing. The people that came from California is like, oh, this is so much better. I can see, you know, my wealth now that I've worked so hard for. I can see it more now than I could in California, you know, New York, the, now taxes in New Jersey is unreal. And I just think that you have to understand that you're gonna have an asset, but you're gonna have a liability as well. So tell me this, day to day, what does a commissioner do day to day?
Great question. Um, you know, a lot of it is communication between emails and phone calls. Uh, commissioners don't, you know, a lot of times they go, oh, John, you just have to go to two meetings a month. Well, that's not true because you also have committee assignments. I serve on the audit committee and the finance committee and uh.
You go to a lot of meetings.
Lot of meetings. And then I'm also involved with the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, so I'm involved with meetings that, that they have. Yeah, and it's, it's also handling constituent issues. And I think that's helped me by having a background. That goes back to the BZA and to West Knox County Homeowners of who to talk to about a particular issue. If it's drainage in their backyard or parking on the street or they're having an issue with, with one of the libraries. Or they don't understand why the sheriff's office did this. You know, you're the kinda the go-between, between you and the county. And it's interesting because when I, as a county commissioner, call one of the department heads. You get top attention right away. And, and I've been able to get a lot of things done behind the scenes quickly. But I, but the other thing is you've gotta be able to do it, we've got some awesome Knox County employees. We have about twenty-four hundred employees. Who are not part of the school system. Um, a thousand of them are actually under Mayor Jacobs. From the parks to engineering, the public works, the libraries, the health department, all those entities. And then we have about a thousand employees that are under Sheriff Tom Spangler. Now you go, well, I don't see a thousand employees running around in Farragut within sheriff's cars. Well, no. Majority of his employees are out at the, at the county detention facility. And then we have about four hundred employees that are just involved with the courts process, whether it's juvenile court. Or criminal court and, and all the staff that's involved there. And uh, but. The one thing I'll, 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 I'll say hands down is we've got some just amazing county employees. From the, the department heads all the way down to the, just all the way down the line and um. I have nothing but the utmost respect for them. And a lot of times when I call, I don't identify who I am. I just say, hey, here's. You know, can you help me with this? And then they help me. And then I identify then after. And so they didn't treat me with special, you know, privileges, you know. But if there's something that needs to be done right away, I'll, you know, say, hey, this is Commissioner Schoonmaker, you know, I think this is a.
Everybody. Trust me, this person's very. Not wanting that attention, you, you want a, a solution and a resolution. It's more important to you to uh, make a difference than throwing your weight.
You know, some people wanna be the hero. I don't wanna be the hero. I just wanna get the thing done. It's amazing, uh, what, if you understand county government and you know how the processes work, how much more you can get done. And that's kinda the, the, um, the, the learning curve that new commissioners have to go through. And it takes a while to understand. What you, what you have to do.
Are y'all hearing that? It takes a while and you have to be patient and you have to understand that the county's working on things, even when you think. Okay, you're not hearing anything, you know, uh, why isn't nothing getting done? It takes a, it's a process and it takes time. To do some things. And I, I, I know I get impatient too, so I'm not saying that I don't, but. Truly, truly, John is in a position that he's willing to help and he's willing to hear you. He wants you to show up to the, the meetings. And we're gonna do a part two to this podcast because. I've got some questions for John that I think that he wants to answer. And I think a part two of this podcast is worthy. Tune in next Friday to Talk in Tennessee Podcast. Bye, guys.